I'm going to declare the meeting open. The acknowledgement of country and prayer will be conducted by the CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Cabragaw Clan of the Durrick Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durrick and Durrick Nations. Moving to the affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. The prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you. Do we have any apologies? Okay. Any condolences? Declarations of interest?
Yes, two for my part. Thank you, Madam Mayor. In relation to proposed item 13, which is to do with casual hiring fees of council facilities, I am a member of an organisation which does in fact hire casually council facilities from time to time. I'm going to call it non pecuniary, not significant, and I don't intend to leave the virtual room in relation to that. Secondly, in relation to councillor Hitty's proposed motion point five, which reads, 'Direct the CEO to extend the parking permit system to businesses and their staff operating from the CBD'. I am a business that operates from the CBD. I'm also going to call it not significant, not pecuniary. I don't intend to leave the room in relation to that. And if it matters, I seldom park in the CBD anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other declarations of interest? Okay. I have a non pecuniary, non-significant interest in items, initiative items 13, 14 and 15 in regards to I'm a member of organisations that casually also have licence agreements and would future have some sort of effect in regards to fee structure. I personally don't have any gain in it, but the organisations I'm a member of do. But I will not be leaving the virtual room.
I'll declare a non pecuniary, less than significant, Madam Mayor, in relation to the fees payable by organisations that rent our halls. My kids do karate. A sister organisation rents a council hall, council facility. Non pecuniary, less than significant. It doesn't affect the club that they go to. I don't get any benefit whatsoever from doing anything.
Thank you. Any others?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am also a member of an organisation that casually hires council facilities. It's non-significant, non pecuniary, as I don't benefit either.
Thank you. Any other? Someone's very quiet. Councillor Hagerty, you're very quiet.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, yeah, same. So I don't know if you got me the first time, but I'm a member of an organisation that hires the facilities.
Councillor, there's some... Any other issues? Okay. I'm conscious we have several initiatives in front of us. We can do them individually, or we can seek to do, englobo, a certain number of them that we're all agreeing with and leave certain ones out and do them individually. I'll be happily to be guided by the media.
I think we do them one by one.
Is everybody happy with that? No response. It's always a good way.
Yes, happy with that.
First item then is initiative one on page four. I think everybody can read.
Mayor, I've sent through a suggested... An apologies to everyone for the lateness of it. But before it does go up, I just wanted to confirm with staff that I haven't crossed any lines or boundaries. I'd hate to do that in circumstances, especially right now.
In relation to the staffing matter, the staff budget is for councillors to determine. Within that, it's for me to determine what occurs operationally. So you certainly can set the budget, which would hold the freeze, but then appointment of positions, that's an operational matter, councillor. I appreciate what I could do, we might just need to nuance it a little bit, is to make the request for the budget for any new positions, but you wouldn't be determining that position, if that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely it doesn't. It was never my intention to tell you who to employ and not employ. But the intention was, whatever the current budget now is, is that's what we stick with till December. So I'm happy for the words to change. And yes, never my intention to take on your role of who to employ.
Thank you. And just so you're aware, that's the direction I've given to Mr Nardan already in relation to the 2021 budget. So we'll tidy that up. The only other matter is just in relation to the one you sent round. It's in relation to the 7-11s. It's not that we can't do it, we just can't within our current framework. Mr Moore, are you able to just provide some guidance on that for the councillors?
Sorry, just on that, are we going one by one, or do you want to do everything? I thought we were going one by...
We're going one by one.
Okay, we'll do it when we come back to that, then.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Hoss.
Councillor Rhodes and I believe councillor Ballut are trying to get in and they're having some technical difficulties.
Okay. If George could have a look at that, that'd be great. While we're looking at that, councillor Hitty's words, are they there somewhere?
Yeah, well, they're not the... I wouldn't be putting those words up because I don't want them to be misinterpreted, as I'm trying to do the CEO's role. But whatever the current budget is today for staff, it's a budget we work with till the end of this year. And then should there be a need for more, which obviously there will be some changes moving forward, we then revisit that.
So councillor, could I suggest we could put... There's only one issue with how to do that, which is that at this present point in time, there is a 2.5% CPI increase within the award. So... And I suspect that may change, but it hasn't changed at this point in time. So if I retain the current budget, I'm going to have a financial problem in meeting the staff bill. So I think what you could say is, for the first six months of 2021, retain the budget as in the 19/20 staff budget, with the exception of any award mandated CPI increase. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, yeah.
And I'll come back to you.
Sorry there. So yeah, I wasn't connected for the first probably minute or two, few minutes there, what we were talking about there. Now I've got you, I'm online.
Councillor, we're on initiative one, and basically the gist is to freeze the budget, the staffing budget until December. But any sort of CPI increases or legal increases that must be passed on to staff, obviously need to be passed on.
Yep. Okay. Does that work, Madam CEO?
Yes, it just needs to say retain the staffing budget, 1920, with the exception of any mandated award increases.
Yep. Happy to have them do that, no worries.
Yeah, I'll move that way. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And in relation to the way it's written up at the moment, it should be mandated increases rather than manned. Yeah, thank you. So this motion now is moved by councillor Hitty. I'm quite happy to second it, councillor Hitty.
It's been moved by councillor Sheldon and I gather being seconded by councillor Hitty, that's okay with people? Any discussion against this motion?
Can we... Do we have to... It says he retained the budget. Does it need to be the staffing budget?
Yes, it does. I just texted the staff to let them know that it's the staffing budget.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. No opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against. I'm gonna say it's carried. Initiative two, which is on page six.
I'm happy for what I've suggested. If anyone's got suggestions, throw them in. I don't want to be seen as taking over this meeting.
Are we doing that? I guess that's my question.
Can we just move it down? I can't read it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Happy to second councillor Hitty's motion, councillor Hiddit.
Can we move it down so that we can read it in its entirety? We can't read. Now, I've got some issues with this.
Which one?
Initiative number two, keep open public amenities at Big Park, Collingmoor Park and Light Horse Park.
No, that's not what I'm moving, councillor.
Right.
Yep.
Well, that's all I can see on my screen.
Yep, sorry. The bottom bit is what I'm moving.
So can I just request some clarification from councillor Hitty?
Yes.
Are there any significant differences, or what are the significant differences, between the...
Proposal?
Yes, between the proposal and the papers that were circulated.
The state government has come out with a package for the homelessness, for the homeless people. And from my understanding, as part of that package is they will provide accommodation for those that are doing it tough and sleeping rough. I am concerned with then council taking other measures and doing other things when there is a programme in place by the state government to help those that are in need. They are in need and we do need to help them. We shouldn't just leave them out there in the cold. But if there's a state government initiative that's in place, that seems to be working, we should make the most of the state government initiative. And really, let's face it, is it... Are you better off, as long as I'm reading it right, and I think I am, having your own room, provided obviously by the state government? Or are you better off using a shared facility where we need to man, we need to then sanitise every time someone is in there? And then are we responsible for them if they walk out and then get picked up by the police? Because they should be in lockdown. I mean, there is a programme in place by the state government, and I think we should work with them to ensure that they know that there's a programme there, and that they make full use of that programme.
Fair enough, and happy to support something along those lines. I am not sure whether what the state government's proposed includes encouraging safe food donations to designated charities. So if we could maintain that, that would be great.
Well, can we tack your one, councillor Hitty, on to the end of this?
The problem that I see, if I may, Madam Mayor, is that there's two things that really should be done. One is, for the protection of these people, they also have to go down into a lockdown situation. And for the safety of the community, we need these people not freely roaming around the Liverpool CBD. And that's the reason why I feel... I'm not happy with the keep open public amenities in Big Park, Collingmoor Park and Light Horse Park. I think that that is not protecting these particular people at all, who will be associating with other people. And I also believe that for their own safety, it would be better if there is provision through the state government for these people to be in a lockdown situation as well, at least for the next four months, when I believe that the government is going to be looking at these measures once again.
If I may just jump in there, does anyone know, Madam Mayor, for you, that what are the state government, what measures they've got in place? Any measures? Or anyone knows what they are? Because I'm not aware of it.
Councillor Hitty, have you got the details of what the state government is offering?
I'm happy to read it out. It might take me a few minutes. But it was released on the 23rd of March. People sleeping rough are highly vulnerable. Premier has announced New South Wales will proceed to more comprehensive shutdown. The healthiest and safest place for people sleeping rough during the shutdown period is in accommodation, Department of Justice, teams, blah, blah, blah. And encourage them to access special homelessness services where available, and temporary accommodation via link to home where crisis accommodation is available. They're undertaking this work need so in a way that adheres to social distancing advice from New South Wales Health in order to minimise the risk of spreading COVID. They've got a phone thing happening for them, and I understand that some people may not have access to a phone. That's where we could probably help. They're offering face-to-face, and they're offering specialist homelessness service or temporary accommodation. Now, one of the key things in their release is, New South Wales Health, in order to minimise the risk of spreading COVID-19 to people sleeping rough, and to minimise risk for workers. I mean, there's a programme in place to minimise the risk for themselves, for others, and for those that are involved with them. Happy to add on to or take more advice, or leave it open so that we can still provide something. I do believe though, and to councillor Rhodes's point, if we leave a lot of things open and encourage people to be getting together, it goes against everything that we're trying to put into place, and that's this social distancing, or whatever you want to call it, to ensure this virus doesn't spread.
So knowing how these... Well, not exactly how this programme in particular works, but knowing how these programmes works, there's always criteria and conditions, and there are always people that fall through the cracks. So perhaps we start with, that is point one, support the homeless, blah, blah, blah. Where that's not possible, what we've got. So for the people that, for whatever reason, don't apply to the state government's sleeping rough programme, we do what's there. And I think, before we go on, can I, through you, Madam Mayor, CEO or the relevant director, can you just speak toward, to that programme a bit more? I think there's the perception here that homeless people are sort of having group showers at Big Park, when my understanding is that's not the case, and the appropriate procedures are being followed, and everyone's undertaking the correct hygiene and social distancing.
And before you answer that, Madam CEO, can you address the issue that these people are walking around the streets of the Liverpool CBD and maybe spreading the virus?
I'll address that issue first. That's really a policing matter, councillor Rhodes. Our staff don't have any authority to prevent people walking the streets if they choose to. It obviously, you know, homelessness is an extremely complex issue, and it's not just a matter of not having a house. There can be psychological and social issues attached to it as well. So I suspect, you know, you're seeing some of that played out if people are on the streets. And we speak to the police on an almost daily basis at the moment. And to my knowledge, and I'll ask Mr Patterson to jump in if I'm incorrect, they haven't reported homelessness, people congregating, homeless people congregating as a particular issue. I'll ask Dr Jackson to speak to the state government's response in relation to homelessness.
Through the CEO, we are working very closely with the Department for Communities and Justice. And the measures that they have proposed are welcome, but in practice, they generally offer five days temporary accommodation, where accommodation actually exists. Where there is demand above the level of supply that's available, then, as councillor Hagerty pointed out, some people do fall through the cracks. We're working closely with not only our colleagues in state government, but the not-for-profit and charity sector, in trying to provide a comprehensive suite of measures here. We are all working in concert. The measures complement those that are available through the state programme, and there has been widespread satisfaction with the combined response within Liverpool. The reality is, as the CEO has pointed out, the homeless people can't be forced into lockdown, and they can't be forced into accommodation. And we're working closely with the police to ensure that large gatherings don't occur. It is a complex issue.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Through the CEO, what... Or back to you again, what about the fact that they are actually breaking the law that is imposed upon the rest of us? Is there some sort of contradiction that I am seeing here?
What?
So being homeless means that you do not have to abide by the law?
I'll come back to the fact that really that is a policing matter. I mean, it is impossible to go into lockdown in a home if you don't have a home. I think councillor Hitty's picked that up really well, that that's something that the state government are particularly concerned about and are trying to resolve. Look, I mean, it would be a matter for the courts to decide, but I think as long as you're socially isolating, so you're not congregating with more than two people, you can't be in a home if you don't have a home. Certainly, I've not heard of anyone who is homeless being charged at this point in time. I suspect it would be a media story if it had occurred. So I imagine the police are dealing with it, they've got more sensitivity.
If these people were offered the opportunity of accommodation, and perhaps it could be a twofold attack from council, one to protect these people by providing them that accommodation, and the other one would be by, if council was to pay for that accommodation, how much money would that cost us? How many homeless people do we have in Liverpool?
That's actually a really complex question, because there is a difference between rough sleepers and people who are homeless and who are essentially couch surfing. I can't remember from our last homeless count, I think our numbers of rough sleepers were under, significantly under 100. Dr Jackson, are you aware of our rough sleeper population?
Through the CEO, at the last homelessness and rough sleeper count, there were 29 rough sleepers identified. Now, a further and more comprehensive count was due to take place in conjunction with the Department for Communities and Justice. That had to be deferred because of the current situation. It is a movable feast. It varies day by day, and I think it's... Our response has been guided by the experience of those who deal with homelessness on a regular basis. That includes DCJ and other not-for-profit bodies, including the Axavus Foundation and the Salvation Army. What we're trying to do, for example, is when people present for food, they're having their temperatures tested. Where anyone with a high temperature is then referred to a COVID testing centre adjacent to the hospital. In that way, people, the agencies recognise that it's a very effective preventive mechanism, and it actually provides assurance to the homeless people themselves that they either have a possibility of a test, or that have undertaken that test, that they are negative. The temperature testing is regarded as a great example of giving assurance to the local community, that people who may be on the streets are still safe, they're not spreading the virus.
Thank you, Eddie. Can I just confirm, councillor, because I've just had it sent to me by the staff as well, that in the public health order signed by Minister Hazard, where the minister directs that a person must not without reasonable excuse leave the person's place of residence, it specifically states that subclause one does not apply to a person who is homeless. So people who are homeless are not bound by that clause.
So they're not breaking the law?
So answering councillor Rhodes's question quite well, thank you. Moving along, any other discussion?
I've got one question, if I may, Madam Mayor. A question to Dr Jackson. Could you just indicate the number of current homeless shelter providers operating in the Liverpool LGA that answer to the state government's description as set out by councillor Hitty in his motion? Thanks.
Through the CEO, I'd have to take that on notice, councillor Sheldon.
Are you able to estimate?
I would say probably half a dozen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussions?
So just a question there, through you, Madam Mayor, to Dr Jackson. You said that whilst these people could be attending a food stall or a food assistant, that they can be, their temperature can be taken, correct?
Through the CEO, that's correct. That's correct.
Their COVID positive or not. Well, that's a good sign. I mean, and I suppose that initiative is, you have probably received a lot of advice around the place in order to put that initiative in place, correct?
Through the CEO, that's correct, councillor.
And what councillor Hitty put forward, would that work hand in hand with what we're looking at, initiative two?
Through the CEO, absolutely. And that's the way we have designed the response thus far. So there's nothing contradictory in that. And we have ensured that we are all adding value here. There's no duplication, there's no replication. We're trying to be as efficient and as effective as we can.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Mayor, we're happy to second the motion moved by councillor Hitty.
Councillor Hitty, I have to get some clarity. What is your motion now?
Mayor, I think in the first instance, we should be looking at what DCJ is offering. Anyone that comes through our services should be directed, and we should assist them to get the support that's being provided by the state government. So lead them in the right direction, work with them to get that support. My concern then is, if they choose not to take on that support, where there's a hotel room, where there's a shower, where there's a bed, where there's probably a balcony, a kitchen, and somewhere where they could sleep safe and sit safe, I'd be concerned that we keep the centres open after a month for people who are refusing pretty much five-star accommodation compared to really one-star accommodation. Not saying our facilities are bad, but, you know, I'd be concerned. But in the first instance, yes, refer them to that, and then maybe revisit this in a future council meeting. But keep the facilities open for now, I suppose.
Madam Mayor, I foreshadow a motion, being the one that appears in the book, which is the word set out by councillor Hitty, plus attached to it, the words that were circulated to council, council laws.
Okay, thank you.
That's the motion I was moving on the suggestion of councillor Hagerty.
So you're moving...
Yeah, that's what I put up.
Yeah. So pretty much...
Tony, in the first instance, we're not Tonying what we put in the book.
Yep.
So combining both of them, which is what councillor Sheldon is foreshadowing?
Well, there's no need to foreshadow it, if that's what it is.
Yeah, it's the same thing. Okay.
That's what it is.
So moved by councillor Hitty and seconded by councillor Hiddit, is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the carried, carried. Next item, section three.
So I'm happy to move three and four as a block.
Okay. So everybody else happy with that?
The thing, are we aware of the news on, this evening's news, that they're going to be looking at opening up or readdressing the lockdown in four weeks' time? I'm just wondering... you know, the time that these businesses are going to need support when things are opened up again. So I would like us to be very careful about what we're doing so that we're able to help them once they're opened up again. I noted in some of the things to deliver business resiliencies, Webinar Series to support, you know, digital marketing, if they're open to digital marketing and everything like that. And I just wonder, have we thought about the fact that some of these businesses may not survive this as it is and will not be operating? So you might be spending money on businesses that are not going to survive this. Or you don't know, once they get their digital platforms or whatever with council's assistance, that they may choose not to be in the Liverpool CBD anymore, but work from home. Have all these things been considered in the initiatives that you've put forward? And considering that in four weeks' time, all things being good, we're going to be working on reopening the economy. I notice you've got tourism in there, hospitality, which would be the restaurants. The tourism, we really only have one hotel in the Liverpool CBD.
Thank you councillor. CEO, is there anybody that could answer just some of those questions broadly about preparing for the reopening of businesses?
Yes, I'll start by saying that yeah, the council staff are aware of the real complexity of this area and that there will be some businesses that will probably struggle to reopen. In relation to when the lockdown comes off, I don't think any of us can guarantee that at the moment. But certainly economic forecasters have indicated it will take some significant time to build up confidence back in the economy, particularly considering many people will be on reduced incomes. I might ask Miss Scott if she is online, I haven't checked which of my staff are here, if she's able to respond further to some of those comments.
Thank you. And through the CEO. Councillor, when we put together the programme, we have done it in parallel with our existing business development programme. So what you've got is almost three parts. You've got one part that's doing a very quick working with the CBD businesses, and that includes everything from retail, hospitality, tourism, through to the other businesses in the city centre itself. We're running a parallel programme with other industry sectors outside the city centre, and that's throughout the LGA. And you've also got our existing business development and investment attraction plan that will continue on with a number of our specialist officers to ensure that we have a sustainable economy. So what you've got in front of you here is a 12-month programme that we can very easily then roll into our existing business development programme to guarantee that there'll be sustainability. We've also looked at the fact that we're not just providing one solution fits all. We've talked to over 300 businesses across a number of industry sectors. We've made almost a top 10, top 15 list of what are the key issues. There are more things beyond digital marketing. There are other, various other market things that we're actually looking at. We're looking at putting them into networks. We're looking at how we can help them with exporting. So there's a whole raft of measures we're going to be doing there and also taking into account being realistic that not everybody may want to survive this particular period.
Thank you Julie, but the point that is, a point on page nine, roll out a grants programme targeting CBD businesses affected by the crisis to facilitate the development of an online and digital marketing presence. I guess it was just that that made me think that, hang on, council might be spending money, you know, helping businesses to do this. Where is, are you looking at whether digital marketing will assist these businesses? Because digital marketing isn't a fireproof system to put in place to make sure these businesses as well. It is, you know, digital marketing is not suitable to all businesses, obviously. And that was the main thing that I saw, that I thought, well, I wonder if you're considering, we wouldn't like to be spending council or ratepayers money helping people to do a website, say. And then, you know, they fold and they're only taking advantage of the grant because it's there and they've got nothing better to do with their time. I just wanted to safeguard council from wasting money by not covering these types of situations that obviously will exist.
Councillor, I think we can build those concerns into the grants criteria. The beauty about doing things as a grants programme is it means that the applicant needs to demonstrate how they're going to manage some of those things that you've brought up. So I think, I think we can manage those. Miss Scott's team is very experienced and knows the businesses in this area as well at a granular level. So that will help determine what type of support is needed. But I do think a grants mechanism allows us to assess all of those concerns out.
Thank you.
Madam mayor, I just have a couple of, I guess, points to raise. Firstly, and this is probably more sort of at the point where, you know, things are reopening, so further down the track. I know that in the community section, we looked at, you know, members of our community who might be going through a difficult time, who may have lost their jobs, who may be kind of looking to retrain and those sorts of things. And I love the focus of running, you know, local campaign, looking at local businesses and that sort of thing in initiative four. Is there a way that we can kind of, you know, at that point marry some of these up so that we're not sort of looking at those things in isolation?
Yes, I think so. Miss Scott, are you able to expand on that a little bit more? Because I know you're looking at training and development as well through this process.
Thank you CEO, and through the CEO. The programme that we're putting forward via council is in partnership with both the federal and state government initiatives as well. There's a whole raft of funding, grant funding and actual assistance that are going to be available over the next little while in terms of rolling out retraining, reskilling, redeploying. And again, rather than offering a one solution fixes all, we are genuinely wanting to understand what's happening in each industry sector, in each particular small business. There are a lot of micro businesses that don't always fit into the actual criteria that's being released by two levels of government. And so we are looking at how we can actually provide, you know, very specialised assistance. And again, not just looking at council as being an ATM. This is about sustainability. This is about putting them in purview of wanting to, if they want to grow their business over the next 12 to 18 months and then looking towards their future, what can we be doing for them? If they want to exit their business, how can we also assist with that? So we've also got a raft of measures which obviously have not been put forward through here. But again, we've got this as part of our toolkit, that we can do everything about succession planning, exiting businesses, looking at cash flow opportunities, cash flow problems, and what we can actually do that on a granular level. So through the CEO, again, yes, we do have a lot of specialists on my team, but also access to a number of specialised business advisers who can offer a whole range of solutions.
That's great. That's just some of the questions I had around particularly that reskilling and upskilling of people's section. In just in terms of making sure that what is being offered is actually appropriate for those in our community who, you know, may be looking to retrain, may need to go into different industries and those sorts of things. So thanks for that.
Okay, any other discussion? Second up?
Yeah, I'll second that, thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Sheldon. I heard someone wanting to say something.
Yes, yes, madam mayor. Look, I have no issue at all with supporting businesses within Liverpool local government. But the priority should go is for the businesses who are currently operating. And the only regard of the businesses who aren't operating. So any, any support should be conditional of to reopen their businesses within Liverpool.
Thank you councillor. Anybody wish to speak against this initiative, three and four? I'll put it, those in favour, those against. Thank you, initiative five.
I've got something to start the discussion, madam mayor, if you like.
Yes councillor.
It should pop up shortly. And it is direct to CEO to extend the parking permit system to businesses and their staff operating from the CBD or permits to have an initial lifespan till end of July 2020. That should get the discussion going.
Yes, I think it will. Who would like to lead the discussion?
I guess I will.
Okay, councillor Hagerty.
Question for the CEO. Logistically, how do we, how do we, how do we think we could make this work? How would we police it to make sure it wasn't taken advantage of? And to make sure that genuine workers in the CBD who needed to park in the CBD to go to and from work, we're doing so.
Well, we have been utilising a permit system for the essential services workers following the resolution of council previously. So we would be able to implement a permit system. It has some complexity to it because we would need to get details of what the businesses were, how many staff they had. We would obviously need to check those permits as our rangers would check other things. Whether people would exploit it, probably. And there's not too many ways for us to manage that out. But you would like to hope that the community would see this, if you choose to do it, as a gesture of goodwill and not overly exploit it or undermine the intent of it, which is to make things easier for businesses.
Thank you.
Just by way of background on this, this has come from the business community. The concern at the moment is previously a lot of their staff used to catch trains and public transport into work. Obviously with things being, and them wanting to keep their staff on, more staff are now driving to work because it's a lot safer. Now, the businesses are, you know, have taken a hit. Not all businesses, but most businesses have taken a hit with their turnover. Their staff in some cases have taken a pay reduction because they want to work with their employer and they will go on that job keeper, noting that, you know, things are tough and they want to keep their job and they're happy to get the 750 job keeper instead of, you know, 550 job seeker. But by now driving into the CBD and having to pay for parking, it's another hit to what they're currently earning. So that's now reducing it as well. So it was really a way of thanking those businesses that are still open, thanking the employer for keeping the employees on during these tough times. And given that the CBD at the moment isn't full, it's a way we can say thank you to them as well by offering them a parking spot for a limited timeframe. Obviously, if lockdowns are removed, there will be some time where a business needs to recover. But then, you know, we can easily withdraw that if we see that the economy is, you know, full steam ahead again.
Question, does the CBD include Westfields?
Councillor, yes, our inclusion of the CBD in terms of how council staff determine it, Westfield sits in that. I'd have to ask councillor Hachity whether his intention is in relation to Westfield.
CBD would include everybody working in Westfields as well.
Yeah, as is currently written, you're right councillor, but you'll find that Westfields has now got free parking, from what I understand. And if you have managed to go into or talk to anyone operating from Westfields, there's not many people operating from Westfields at the moment. It's like a ghost town if you were to walk through it. So if you wanted to exclude Westfields, I'd be more than happy to put that in there. And also, given that we're doing something for the for the essential, you know, for the nurses and doctors, if you want to exclude the hospital as well, well then, you know, you can do that. You can make it as big or as small as you choose to do. But Westfields at the moment is offering free car parking. And if you've driven or walked into Westfields lately, you'll find you can pretty much park anywhere and you have no risk of social distancing or getting within, you know, five metres of anyone.
Get that through you, madam mayor. The difficulty is the motion talks about going through till July 2020. So although Westfields may be a bit of a ghost town at the moment, it does have that three-month, four-month lifespan to it.
Happy to exclude Westfields, happy to exclude the hospital, given we're doing something for them already. Happy to exclude the plaza and anything else you see fit councillor Sheldon.
You put in and other healthcare providers, so we can include the doctors, the pharmacies, et cetera, who are also operating in the vicinity.
I think councillor, you want to include them, not exclude them, is that right councillor?
Yeah, that's the intent, yeah.
So that, so directing the parking system for businesses and their staff operating from the CBD, excluding Westfield hospitals and other health providers. So I think what you do is you put exclude Westfields Hospital, full stop, because you don't want the other health workers excluded, do you?
Whether you want to say excluding Westfields, but not hospitals and other care.
I'd leave it open councillor, if you start to get too prescriptive, I think we end up sort of being here in a doomsday a little bit. The hospital does have its own parking, I'd like to remind people.
Just on that, madam mayor, can I ask if New South Wales Health has provided a response to our correspondence encouraging them to provide free parking for their staff?
Councillor, not to our correspondence yet, but it is my understanding that Minister Hazard has announced that health workers will have free parking in health facilities, but I haven't been formally advised on that.
Well, that's a good start.
I think you'll find the Health Services Union head, and I can't remember his name, came out saying, yes, that has been provided.
Mr Hayes.
Mr Hayes, yes, who's doing a fantastic job at the moment. I think he has already come out saying that, I could be wrong, but I believe that has been put into place. The only little concern I've got with how we've worded it there, when somebody picks this up and looks at it, won't know that we're actually doing something with the, with doctors and nurses around the hospital. And I'd hate them to think that we are excluding them from this. So although.
I think the note in initiative five explains it councillor, the motion may not, but the actual note does.
But not the hospital, okay, yep, done. Thank you mayor.
All right, a second up for this motion?
Yeah, happy to second it.
Thank you councillor, dude, is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the carried. The next item is initiative six.
Happy with that.
Would someone like to move it?
Councillors, sorry, can I just interject here? Because we have been able to find a way that we can safely do rehoming. Mr Moore, are you able to just provide that information there?
Certainly through the CEO. Yes, we've made some extra, we'll put some extra checks and balances into the rehoming process in effect, which will involve people making an appointment, extra space being provided. So it can be done safely and it will commence next week.
Well, can we just take this entire thing out then?
Yes. You don't require it because we've been able to find a way to make it work, yeah.
So delete, delete that one? Initiative seven?
Second it.
Someone like to move initiative seven, I think that's pretty straightforward.
I'll move that one.
Thank you councillor Calander. Councillor Hall, are you happy to second it?
You're on mute, Tony.
All right, we're going to put it, anybody against it?
Sorry, sorry mayor.
Yep.
Happy with it.
It's just someone about no stopping.
Yep. Can we just, can we just leave it at the first sentence? Now, again, similar to what we've done previously in this. And obviously we're going live, so people can see it, people can read it, people can do everything else. But anyone that just picks up the minutes doesn't think it's a free for all. I think the CEO has taken on board the, what we want to see happen. And I think it's best if we just leave it at the first sentence. And I, I think it's best if we just leave it at the first sentence.
I have a concern about that councillor, because I think if you do, it doesn't make it clear that we are still doing what we need to be doing to protect the public. You know, dog attacks are an issue. Environmental pollution is an issue. Parking on nature strips, you know, causing obstruction is an issue. And trucks taking up residential parking in streets is also an issue and continues to be one, as we all know. So.
All right, well, what if. What if we word that second sentence as this, this may, this, this will include but may not be limited to? Or something like that, less prescriptive.
I'm just, just leave, if you're happy with the wording in the first bit, that's councillor. I'm just trying to not have people see it as a free for all. So if you park, you're not going to get booked.
See, I, councillor, with, with respect, I read that as the other way. That that's sung very clearly, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this.
But then it also tells me that.
Free for all at all.
But then it also tells me that if I'm in the CBD, I can park for two hours in a, without putting a ticket on. That's, anyway, just leave it the way it is. I'm happy with that.
Look councillor, if it doesn't work out and it is actually causing issues, we'll most certainly find out really quickly, I think.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy with it. No problem.
Thank you. Councillor Hachidi moving, second it.
No, 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 councillor Caliander, I'll second it.
Sorry councillor Caliander. Second it. Who's seconding? No, councillor Hachidi, no, no, yep. You're happy with that councillor?
Yeah, it's fine, yes, absolutely.
All right, okay. Any opposition?
No.
I'll put it those in favour, those against, the Claire Carrick. Initiative eight.
I'm happy with my one to go up if it's there.
Councillors, can I just advise for the, for the point of clarity, that while we're suspending health inspection fees, we're certainly not stopping health inspections. At this point in time, they are absolutely even more critical than normal. So just for the point of clarity.
Yep, thanks for that.
Yeah, happy to second it.
So just to clarify, does that mean that councillor Hachidi's amended motion is still applicable or not?
Yep, that, that, that's absolutely fine. It's still applicable. Yep.
I have to say councillor, when we had the presentation from the staff, I was genuinely concerned about a lot of folk that weren't paying before the virus hit. So at least this gives some sort of structure over how people are to recover the monies owed. Which has nothing to do with what's happening now. Someone, councillor Hachidi moving, councillor Didd moving, any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, the Claire Carrick. Initiative nine.
I'll move what I've sent through to George, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, this is the one where can I just ask Mr Moore to provide some clarity around the seven elevens?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, councillors, through the CEO. Certainly no objection to the principle of that. In fact, all of our contributions plan, plans contemplate deferral of payments from CC to OC. Except that it says the circumstances need to be considered and a bank guarantee must be provided in lieu. So with that provision in place, it defeats the purpose of, of, of what you're trying to achieve with this councillor, which, which I fully accept. Therefore, we would need to make a, a simple amendment to the plan, to the, to, to, to all of the plans to overcome that. We could easily put a, a time limitation on that so that it aligned with, with this period of economic difficulty. But it would mean we would need to get a resolution from council and exhibit the change to that plan. Whether or not we could start putting conditions of consent on that were inconsistent with the policy is something that I'm happy to talk to our lawyers about. So that we could get moving potentially on it straight away. But otherwise, there is that, there is that minor administrative issue with making that change immediately.
All right, so would you then be okay with a, there's three paragraphs there, then a point four, which says, subject to planned amendments, legal advice. The exhibition period that you need to do. So happy for you to do what you need to do, obviously go through the process. And then if all goes well, well then from this point in time, we can then just do that till December 2020.
Yeah, certainly councillor.
Yeah, so whatever words you need in there, Mr Moore, I'm happy for you to have it worded so that we get it right.
So, Mr Moore, would it be something like amend the contributions plan to remove the requirement of a bank guarantee? Adopt immediately if permissible, otherwise exhibit for statutory 28 days period. Would that do the trick?
Yes, perfect.
Yep, thank you.
Well, my, okay, so now that I, so what you're saying is that effectively it already operates like this with the exception of. In, in order to qualify for this 50 50, you need a bank guarantee. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct councillor.
Okay, I'm uncomfortable with removing the requirement for a bank guarantee. If you don't have a bank backing you, then. Yeah. I, I think the, the bank guarantee, I think the way it's already in place is, is fine.
So, so, so if I may jump in, so.
Yes.
Let me, and this a bit better, so.
Might have to speak up councillor.
Yeah, so as it stands, Mr Moore through you, Madam Mayor, that initiative nine does provide relief with providing bank guarantees, right?
Yes councillor, that, that's correct. Or, or more accurately, the, the section 90, the seven eleven plans now. All note that deferral of payment from construction certificate to occupation certificate can occur. If, in, if the circumstances are evaluated. And if during that period between construction certificate and occupation certificate, the amount of contribution is secured by a bank guarantee. The, the, the issue there is that a bank guarantee requires cash in the bank. And so it in effect changes nothing in terms of easing the financial restrictions. Or limitations for a developer, which, you know, the councillor Hachidi is, is trying to overcome with this motion. The construction, the occupation certificate is certainty in itself that payment can be achieved. So deferral during this period to that point is something that I would be comfortable with without a bank guarantee in the circumstances. It's just that we would need to amend the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, so. So the bank guarantee will be out for that period of time, you're saying?
Sorry councillor, didn't catch you there.
So did you say the bank guarantee will not apply for that period of time? Is that what you're saying?
If, if we were to amend the plan to remove that requirement, yes, that's right.
It's a matter for councillor.
Yeah, okay.
Councillors, I'll just speak to the motion and you, you'll see in this report further on where we're going to call on government to fast track developments. We talk about, you know, supporting us so that we can build things. We all know that building really is going to stimulate the economy. If something is built, it generates jobs for everyone, not just the people on site building, but the restaurants, the cafe owners, the shops in Liverpool. And, and all the surrounding. The way I see this is there is no risk to council. We still hold what everybody needs to be able to move into a property unless they do it illegally, of course. And that's an occupation certificate. This will provide relief for those people that can go out there and say, council wants to help us and we want to help them. We've all been provided a report which is confidential, so I can't go in there and it's only a draft report that talks about our section seven elevens. I encourage everyone to read it if they haven't. And I think it's something that we can afford to do that will help everyone. We're not saying give them a free ride. We're not saying don't charge this. All this is saying is let's show some confidence in these people as well. Let's stimulate our own economy. Let's do something, I, I don't think anyone else is doing it. So it's a great initiative. Let's say when you want to do your development, pay us half now, get it started. When you're ready to occupy, you can pay us the other half. It would provide relief. In relation to a bank guarantee, Mr Moore points out correctly. You, you need to have the money to give a bank guarantee. So although you defer section 94, it's still going to be money in the bank somewhere for a bank to issue the bank guarantee. I, I don't see any risk in this. We have compliance officers out there. We should be tracking our DAs. We should be knowing the progress of the DAs that are going through. And let's face it, if this can help create more jobs, why don't we do it?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm not really comfortable with that councillor, so I'd, yeah, I'd leave it at that.
So councillor, is there issues that you're not comfortable with that you'd like to raise?
Yeah, I'd like to move as a book councillor.
Thank you councillor Balut. I just have a question. I'm, probably I'm getting a bit confused here. Are we retaining the bank guarantee in councillor Hachidi's motion?
No.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm a little bit confused as well. So are we now, is number four included in councillor Hachidi's? And I also have a question for management. With this wording, if this gets passed, where does that leave council legally?
There's no legal impediments to doing this. It's your policy. It's a decision of council whether you choose to hold a bank guarantee or not. As Mr Moore has detailed, the deferral of payment has always existed in your policies, obviously to provide some flexibility. However, it has been anchored to a bank guarantee at, at this point in time. But if you choose to amend your own seven eleven policy, that, that's a matter for council to determine.
Well, through you then, Madam Mayor, that then gives, the current policy does offer all that relief already.
It would seem so councillor.
Yeah.
No, sorry councillors, it doesn't.
I have a question. Hold on a minute councillor Rhodes, councillor Hachidi has the floor.
Sorry, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr Moore or, or CEO. It, it doesn't offer you that relief because if you're given a bank guarantee, you need to have the money in the bank to be able to get a bank guarantee. So it's not offering you that relief.
That, that's, that's correct councillor. Your interpretation is how I would interpret that as well.
And I just want to be clear that it's the hundred percent, isn't it, of what's required?
I believe, Mr Moore, the, the bank guarantee is not just the 50, is it? It's, it's the full amount. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. A bank guarantee for the full amount of the contribution payable.
Thank you very much. Have you spoken to motion councillor Hachidi? I'm a bit confused. I think you have from memory. Any speakers against the motion? Yes councillor Rhodes, go ahead.
Thank you. I can see what councillor Hachidi is trying to do, which certainly I think would impress the, the business development section of council. In that he's trying to initiate something that would inspire or assist people to develop. Considering that the building industry is one of the, the most substantiated way of kickstarting the economy. Can somebody explain to me, without a bank guarantee, does that mean that the businesses could go broke? And then council would be left in some sort of a situation? What does the bank guarantee actually do for council? Can somebody explain that to me?
Well, it, it's a level of security councillor to ensure that we would receive the full seven elevens. As Mr Moore detailed, the, the OC really is the, the point of leverage that council has. If the, if a development collapses, then you end up in a situation where they may unsell that or something else happens. And to trigger the OC, the, the full seven eleven would be required. I, I think, Miss Moore, is there anything I need to add to that?
No, no, you've covered it well.
So if you may allow me again, so that what you envisage is that without that bank guarantee, businesses. Or developers would start a development and then for whatever reason be unable to finish that development. Where the council is left owing the four, the seven eleven and. The, the, the seven eleven fees. So what would happen to that property then if it got unsold? What would happen then? Would, would, is there a end site at the end of whatever does happen that council would eventually get those seven eleven contributions?
Yes, if the, if an OC is finally issued, yes, then we would, the, the, the new owner would be liable for providing all of the required seven eleven.
Thanks, thank, thank you, Madam CEO. The reason why I'm saying this is because at the moment, I mean, interest rates are so low. The only advantage apart from the fact that you seem to be trying to guarantee the council's eventually going to get the seven eleven contributions. Would be the interest that we would get as well as that security of knowing that you've already got them. But the advantage to the Liverpool LGA might be that you are encouraging business through the building industry. Which as I pointed out once before, that you hear the federal government always wanting to get the, the building industry going. Because they believe that has a great impact on the economy altogether. Now, if the only risk is that we're not going to be getting the interest rates which are at an all time low. It's like an incentive package. That was, that, that would be my way of looking at this, having listened to everybody's discussion on this matter. So I think that, you know, it's a stimulus package, basically. So does council want to bring in a stimulus package that may help the economy of Liverpool? I don't know. But that's how I'm viewing it.
So I'm going to say you spoke for that motion councillor. Any speakers against?
The comment, if I may, Madam Mayor, the comment is that this doesn't seem to be particularly well targeted as far as assistance is concerned. Developers come in all shapes and sizes. There's large, there's small, there's in between. And certainly not all developers need the kind of assistance that's proposed in relation to this. And there's been no rule inquiry as to what proportion of developers actually need this. What proportion of developers would be going ahead in any event, regardless of whether this is passed or not passed. So as I said, it's just a comment. I'm not particularly for or against, but I'm troubled that it's nowhere near as well targeted. As a lot of the other reforms that we've been discussing this evening. Thank you.
Councillor, if I may, through you, Mayor.
Yes councillor.
Would the words where it's number one, for example, defer. In between defer and 50% on application. Which will then allow that person to then say, okay, yes, I do need this, which you're going to find that most of them will. But this is targeted on, on everyone councillor Shelton, even your mums and dads that are building their own home. You know, there, there's a lot of people that this can target and I'm happy to include the words on application. That way, it's not just, yes, let's just do it willy nilly. But if there is someone out there that is considering and this may then push them over the edge to actually do it, well then they can apply for it.
So certainly see the logic in that and it, as you say, avoid simply handing it out willy nilly to all comers. The, so yes, it does assist. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Shelton.
Happy to second that motion, Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor Rhodes.
Look, just one final comment there. The implication I'll see in that if the property developer or the builder folds. And does not go through to the OC and that could take years, legal battles, et cetera. Where does leave council? Maybe out of pocket, not collecting seven eleven for many, many years to come. Yeah, I, I just, I, I, I think that's something that, that could or may implicate council and some legal battles, which is other thing we need. So yeah, I, yeah, I'm not for it.
You have your right to call councillor Hachidi.
You have your right of reply councillor Chitty.
Councillor Chitty, can I make a suggestion? Can I ask and then see if a suggestion is any good?
What is it councillor?
Well, I was wondering then, in, in reference to what councillor Balut just said, is there a way that we can word it that, um, that the seven elevens are fifty percent and then fifty percent and have in there some sort of phrasing that covers, uh, or if the property is, uh, sold on or something like that, that the money's got to be paid at that stage?
Ha- happy to respond, Madam Mayor, if you want. The, anything that's ever sold on before you get an occupation certificate, the actual conditions of consent live with that development. So it doesn't matter who owns it. And I'll take this in my right of reply as well, Mayor. That way it just ties them both up. So the conditions.
I appreciate that councillor.
Thank you. So the conditions will live through with that application while it's live. Uh, in relation to councillor, uh, Balut's concerns in relation to legal battles and whatnot, section eleven funding is designed and contributions are designed because it will generate a need um, for more community facilities when people actually move in. So if a building is built and it's never completed for another twenty years or ten years or five years, it means that nobody has moved in, which means that there is no demand on our services. At the end of the day, this is more of a stimulus. It's got a timeframe on it till the end of December twenty twenty. It's not something that's going to go into the never, never. Um, thank you councillor Shelton for your comments in relation to, yes, just make it targeted so it's on application. If we're really talking about a meeting where we're looking at helping community and stimulus, um, and looking at how much funds we currently hold in section seven eleven currently, um, I think this is a good thing that will show a lot of confidence from us to the community to say, yes, we want to get our LGA up and running as soon as possible. And hey, here's a way we can do it.
Um, Madam Mayor, before you call the vote, can I just, um, ask Mr Moore to provide clarity on the CDCs? Just so councillors are aware of the issue with those.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you through the CEO. Just to clarify, um, as in a report, um, that, uh, you have seen previously, it was deferred and it's coming back in April. Um, the legislation says that with CDCs, payment of contributions must be, must be made before, um, work commences. So, um, we wouldn't be able to make this change for CDCs. But there are relatively small number of, um, of developments that proceed with CDCs. And typically that the small, the small type of development as well. So I just wanted to, just wanted to clarify that. Um, it's written into the legislation, but we wouldn't be able to change that.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any opposition to this motion?
Uh, I'll move as per book, Madam Mayor.
Yes, yes, that's foreshadowed motion. Do you, uh, are you opposing this motion councillor Blue?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other people opposing? Motion is carried and foreshadowed motion disappears. Thank you. Next item is initiative ten.
Uh, it would record me voting against it, Madam.
Yes, certainly councillor, no problem. Initiative ten.
Happy to start the discussion with some words going up, Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, through you CEO, I, I, um, it's Dave McGuire, the internal obudsman speaking. I just wanted to, um, address an issue that was, was raised with me prior to the meeting tonight. So the councillors can vote on this motion without, um, uh, concerns. And I, I just want to draw their attention to the, the code of conduct, which, uh, permits them under, um, clause, um, four point six B, uh, to vote on this matter because they, uh, they do not have to disclose, disclose any interest as a rate payer, a person liable to pay a charge. So I just wanted to clarify that so the councillors can be free to vote on, on this matter.
Thank you very much. Happy to second that motion.
Uh, can I, uh, let me just read it. Is this the one where we're nominating a councillor?
Yes.
No, actually, actually now I've, I've changed the words, I maybe read it first councillor.
Okay.
So can we move it down a little bit, um, to read the, the word?
You mean up a bit?
Yes, sorry.
Um, I, I like your online idea. I think we've given social distancing and all that. We should make it easier for people to do things online. However, I don't think we should remove the requirement to provide detailed and complex information. Sometimes if you're in hardship, you need to provide evidence that you're in hardship.
Yeah.
Um, and I was happy with the idea that we, we have a councillor on the committee and I was going to nominate the mayor.
In, in relation to the complex, I was taking on board the comments made by the author of the report, um, which I thought was a, a, a good recommendation, given you don't want somebody to, you know, have to prove what colour shoes they're wearing. Um, and in relation to the other thing, I, I don't have an issue.
Councillor, I think given it's a hardship policy, I do think somebody has to demonstrate that. Sorry to state the proverbial. Um, I understand that it might be embarrassing, but the real, unfortunately, if these situations arise, we do have to go cap in hand to whomever and say this is our problem and these are the reasons why. Um, and as explained at the briefing previously, we've got a very generous sort of, um, group of people. And I know that times are tough at the moment and going to get tougher over the next few months. But overall, we've been very, very good at supporting residents when they've got a genuine reason. I don't think you, I don't think you want a situation where people just go, actually, policy, I can apply for it and I don't care. And unfortunately, there aren't people out there who I think would take advantage of this.
And can I also add that, uh, if, if they need to apply for something like Jobseeker or, or Jobkeeper, um, maybe that's enough.
That's enough, yeah. I mean.
Yeah, but they, they provide evidence that they're on something like Jobkeeper or Jobseeker because they've already provided the evidence to the government. So maybe that, yeah.
Yeah, and they'll have a, they'll have a numbers and contact number, you know, like reference numbers or client number or some other number that they can reference to that. Um. All right. So where are we, where are we at councillor? Sorry, I really shouldn't.
I think I'm saying as per the book.
Okay, councillor Hagerty's book and councillor Chitty's got the first cap off the rank. Uh, and councillor Rhodes is seconding. Did you wish to speak to your motion councillor? Councillor Chitty? Councillor Chitty, do you want to?
Yes, sorry, sorry, Mayor. I think as, as per the book though, it says, um, to simplify the process and remove requirements to provide detailed information. So I'm not sure councillor Hagerty, if you want, has the book.
Oh.
It's to remove all those things. So the only, only difference really between the book and what I've put forward, um, was allow the staff to assess them. If they feel that they're going to refuse one, um, you know, in, in times of this, and we show leadership as councillors, um, maybe those ones are referred to council to finally make a decision on them. That's the only difference.
No, it's not a council.
Just to double check, um, the motion in the book, uh, does that make provision for, uh, the process for applications to be made online?
Uh, yes, it does councillor.
Okay, that's fine.
Oh, I'll be voting for both. So whatever one gets up, I'm happy with.
Oh, well, nothing like two bob each way. Okay, well, we'll put councillor, um, Pachitty's motion first. Who would like to vote against it?
Me.
Me?
Moi.
Two. Me, three. Any other? Yes, I, Calianda, Hagony and myself. Anybody else are posing? All right, that means I'm gathering there's a quorum of councillors here. Who, I actually don't know who's here. We got everybody.
I, I understand all councillors are currently present.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Um, so I'm assuming that voting for is councillor Chitty, councillor Balut, councillor Ayad, councillor Deed, councillor Sheldon, councillor Khanip. The, then I, that motion is moved by councillor Chitty and councillor Rhodes is carried.
Just for clarification, just for clarification, just for clarification, Mayor, on that last one. The last sentence actually says to include you in there, but then the other one says, so I think that needs to go in that one.
All right, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
You want to put that in, that's fine. Thank you.
So just to clarify, that's, is that also in councillor Chitty's motion?
Yes, councillor, he's just.
Yeah, happy, happy for the mayor to be on the thing. And if we refuse it, then it comes to council. Yeah, no drama at all.
Uh, in which case can I, in which case can I vote for? Sorry, I was, I didn't.
Yeah, it's same thing.
Okay, that's fine. I think just for the sake of the typist, I'll just stay put. Thank you. All right, moving on, initiative eleven.
I'm happy to move eleven of fourteen with what I've submitted.
Okay, as a second up.
Hold on, I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Balut. Any opposition?
Can I just ask, can I just ask the CEO or anyone that wants, wishes to answer, is there any issues with how that is written? Or if there's any concerns, please?
I'm just reading it through councillor Sun. George, scroll down for me. No, 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 sorry, up, I should have said.
Sorry, I have emailed it to you to.
Yeah, 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 fine. Uh, no, I see no issues with those. Um, the restrictions obviously, um, were, were ones that we did, they, each, each tenancy may have a different two months period. But yes, no, I see no issue with that.
Uh, just a question there through you, Madam Mayor. How many tenants does Liverpool council have on their books of demand?
That was provided.
Uh, yes, I, I don't have it off the top of my head. We sent it out the other day. Uh, Mr Hamper, are you there with that information?
Look, I can't remember it. Just asking now that I'm looking at it.
Uh, yeah, through the CEO. Um, we have seven retail, uh, retail leases and I think two, two main commercial leases and the, and that, and then we obviously have, um, lease coming from telecommunications as well.
Thank you very much.
Is there any opposition to this collection of initiatives? I'll put it those in favour, those against carried. And I was remiss and earlier in the meeting, and I'd just like to read this. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, this meeting is being livestreamed. Okay, initiative fifteen.
Um, Madam Mayor, I just have a question about initiative fifteen. Um, currently in the, uh, agreement or contract with, um, Belgravia, who is responsible for, say, loss of entrance fees and things like that whilst the facilities are, are closed? Is that council's responsibility or will that be borne by Belgravia?
No, it's all by Belgravia at this point in time. Um, it's, it's slightly complex because we have a, a profit sharing in Michael Clarke. So obviously there's some loss to us there. But no, they are, they bear all, all the risk and responsibility at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask that we defer this one until we get that information? Just in regards to how the contract works with Belgravia and, and what we're, we're on, you know, what we're up for, what they're up for?
Um, at, at this point in time, we're currently negotiating that. Um, uh, it, it's, it's, it's a little bit complex because we, we don't want to have our services shut down altogether when we come out of this place in time. So it's a little bit of a placeholder with Belgravia and we're currently under negotiation. Um, yes, you certainly could defer this until those negotiations had finished. As we discussed at the briefing, I have directed the staff to put the fees as part of the conversation in relation to Belgravia. Um, so you, you could do that, um, or you could just defer section C, or, or you could look at the fees and charges in Globo, or you could look at it when you look at the twenty twenty one budget, by which time we will have, um, information on hand in relation to Belgravia.
How about councillor Hagerty, that you just make the amendment to C? And just defer that item because that was a very good, good idea. So in C, just make an amendment to the motion and say defer this initiative until further information is received.
Well, I guess the, the whole thing plays into fees, but the, yeah, that's one fee, but the other fees also play into the whole budget situation. So if we defer it, let's defer the whole thing until we get the budget and.
Yeah.
Make them all sort of.
I, I think that's a better way to do it.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Defer until we get the budget information moved by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Chitty. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against carried. Initiative sixteen.
I'll move that as per the book, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Second up.
Yeah, I'll second that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, who's there? I heard a little voice.
That's just the boys being cheeky. Sorry, madam.
Okay, all right. Um, any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against the carried. Initiative seventeen. On page thirty-two.
I'm happy to move through, let me.
I've just got a question on that one.
Yeah.
Just in regards to the fit for the future stuff, we're not asking to junk fit for the future. We're just asking that the, the benchmarks and targets be reviewed. And perhaps we change the thresholds and we replace ones that are no longer applicable with new ones. Is that, is that the, that's what we're going with there?
That, that's right. That, that basically there, there is a review of what's relevant at this point in time. And fit for the future itself as a benchmark hasn't been reviewed for five years now. So it seems fairly timely to do that. But certainly, I can't think of a single council, other than probably City of Sydney, who's going to meet their benchmarks over the next year. So it seems timely to request that.
I think they even, might even struggle some, but yeah.
Okay, would someone like to formally move initiative seventeen?
I'll move that way.
Question, um, Madam Mayor.
Hold on councillor Sheldon. Councillor Calianna moving, seconded.
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Rhodes. Yes, councillor Sheldon, what's your question?
Yes, thank you. In relation to page thirty-five, the second entry relating to flood detention basement twenty-nine Ostral. It's indicated there that property acquisitions are not yet complete. I was just wondering if someone could say, without going into the detail, just generally, how long it's anticipated the property acquisitions will take. I presume that's a prerequisite to this being shovel ready.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I will have to take that one on notice councillor Shelton. Um, I'm, I'm, my understanding is that they're in progress, but let me take that on notice and get you accurate information.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition? I'm going to put it those in favour, those against the carried.
Mayor, I'm happy to move a eighteen, nineteen, twenty and a twenty-one.
Well, I don't have those councillors, so you'll have to show me what they are.
It's been sent through to everyone.
I'll have to read it on the computer.
And I think George, you should have him as well. Sorry, George, yeah. Though about twenty-two, that was just picked up in the last, twenty-two was just done as part of number, whatever the last one was that we did, seventeen. Happy to move them all together. Happy to take any questions. Happy to amend something if people aren't comfortable with anything.
I'm happy to second it.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to ask regarding eighteen, I think there's already, um, delegations in place regarding those expenditure figures. Am I wrong in thinking that or?
Uh, no, you're correct, um, councillor, uh, uh, sorry, Madam Mayor. Um, if it's, if it's within an existing budget, um, then yes, I have delegation to spend within that existing budget. Um, that doesn't mean you can't amend the delegations at this point in time. That's not an issue at all. I would just query the approved by full council, whether the intent of that was that it was a unanimous vote or whether that it was approved by council.
Uh, sorry, approved by council, sorry. Remove the word.
Could I suggest any new amount rather than, I mean, if you may end up with a situation where everything that's been already approved and budgeted comes back again for another go around, so.
Yeah, no, no, I don't, that's not the intention at all, Madam Mayor or CEO. No, if there's something that's already been approved and budgeted for and is, is out the door, well then, no, not at all. I wouldn't, um.
Well, maybe we amend that then to, um, commits council to any amount, any amount over five hundred, that is a new, a new expenditure and it'd be approved by council.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor, whatever works. That's why I've. Yeah, absolutely Mayor, whatever works. That's why I've.
Madam Mayor, I have a question in relation to 19.
Hold on, there's a question. Councillor Caliander, I think it is.
Yes, I have a question in relation to 19. Given the nature of the restrictions currently in place, have the outdoor dining fees already been suspended?
Yes, they have councillor.
I've got a question on 19. Didn't I put a notice of motion up towards the end of last year saying we adopt the state government's outdoor dining framework? In which case that meant that we got rid of our outdoor dining policy? Or am I getting that mixed up with something else?
I'd have to take that.
Councillor, I think you said that at the meeting, but I don't think it's been documented.
I think you'd have to take that on notice councillor and get back to you.
Yeah, I'm just getting like November.
Okay, all right. Next one is 20 goods and services immediately, not wait two months. I wish the rest of industry was like that. Keep going. And there's a 21, is there councillor?
Yeah, just one more. And I'll quickly speak on a few of them if anyone's got any just.
It's for all grants and donations to further advice. Okay, go on.
Just in relation to the outdoor dining fees, yes, the CEO immediately did that. I think it was when we had a discussion. This just goes a little bit further. If the lockdowns or the restrictions are lifted tomorrow, allow businesses to get back on their feet and allow eight weeks further of, you know, not charging them a fee. In relation to number 20, yes, we should be helping where we can if we've got the money there ready and we're on a 90-day account. Let's pay these small businesses to ensure that, you know, they can keep their turnover going. Yeah, the other two have been discussed. Thanks, Mayor.
I just have a question of the council staff with regards to 21. Will that cause any issue or hardship for any of our community services or NGOs or whomever?
There's the potential for that, yes. A significant amount of our grant funding does go towards events, you know, to kind of stimulate the local economy. Obviously, events won't be occurring now, but I can think of some instances where community services, for example, have applied in the past for fridges or ovens or something to deliver, you know, meals. There could be examples where they might have an impact if we don't make those grants programs available.
Mayor, happy to remove 21.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that councillor. Is there any opposition to 18, 19 and 20? I'll put it those in favour, those against carried. Any other initiatives? Clear the meeting closed. Thank you very much everybody for attending and thank you for using our technology. Good night everybody.